We'll call this meeting to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Uh, Norm, would you turn on your, your microphone?
Trustee Paulie.
Here.
Trustee Laughlin.
Here.
Clark Palovich here. Treasurer Ellery Summers.
Here.
Trustee Kroll.
Here.
Trustee Reiner.
Here.
Supervisor Skibby.
Here. Uh, moving forward to the adoption of the agenda, uh, before you, there are some changes, uh, as it stands currently, new business item sixteen, which is department reports will be actually, uh, rotated up under Cassette Agenda E. Uh, so all department reports will be housed there moving forward as well. Um, and then also in, uh, place of, uh, old sixteen, there will be sixteen, uh, Housing Task Force, um, allocation, and then, uh, new business item seventeen, uh, Planning Commission Appointment. Uh, with those amendments, uh, are there any others? Not, uh, entertain a motion to move forward with the amended agenda as presented? So moved. We have a motion on the table. Is there support?
I'll support.
It's been moved and supported. Further discussion? All those in favor of, uh, adopting the amended agenda signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed the same. Adoption of agenda. Uh, moving forward, uh, this is the first opportunity for public comment. Uh, this public comment is solely for, uh, agenda items. Uh, if you have any public comment in person, you stand to the podium, state only your name, uh, and limit yourself to three minutes. If you're online, uh, and you have public comment, uh, please use the bottom task bar to raise your hand or send message so that we can, uh, address any potential public comment. Seeing none in person at this point in time. And still seeing none. This is an opportunity, first opportunity for public comment for online. Seeing none. Uh, we'll move forward into the consent agenda. Are there any items on the consent agenda, uh, that need to be removed for further discussion? If not, I'd entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Take a motion.
We have a motion to, uh, accept the dissent agenda as presented. Is there support? Support. It's been moved and supported. Further discussion?
Only discussion I guess I'd have is I noticed that the invoices, uh, weren't very, I guess threw off, if I'm not mistaken, there were just some things that were a little ambiguous on what, what we were reimbursing. So if they could get a little more clarity on that in the future, that'd be great.
Agreed.
What do you mean?
Well, I think there were just some areas. It was just like a, just like a seventy-five dollar bill, but it didn't like spell out exactly what it was unless I was misreading it.
I guess if you could show me it when you're done, when we're done committee, and then I'll see exactly where we need to correct that.
All right.
There's no other, uh, discussion about the consent agenda. We have a motion and support on the table. Uh, roll call, please.
Sir Palovich, yeah. Treasurer Ellery Summers.
Yes.
Trustee Kroll.
Yes.
Trustee Reiner.
Yes.
Trustee Paulie.
Yes.
Trustee Laughlin.
Yes.
Supervisor Skibby.
Yeah. Uh, moving forward, uh, this evening, we have, uh, a, a unique opportunity for a pinning ceremony. Um, and with us, uh, chief, would you like to, uh, take the podium and?
Good evening, everybody. Mark Hanson, Fire Chief. Uh, tonight we have, uh, like, Mr. Skibby said, we have an opportunity to do the first pinning ceremony since I've been here as chief. Uh, I would like to, uh, introduce, uh, our newest employees in that pinning ceremony would be Ed Hoskinson and Jim Stackowitz. And we also have a promotion tonight of Scott Waterson to the, uh, Lieutenant position. Gentlemen, if you'd step up over here in this neighborhood, Mr. Skibby would like to, uh, do the vocal, and then I have a little thing I want to read to you. Thank you. It'd be great.
I'm married to a crew. Oh, he's just so.
Hey gentlemen, if you would please raise your right hand and repeat after me.
Yeah.
Nathan, they don't have to repeat it. They just have to say I do when you're done.
Oh. I'm more stringent about the O S than most. So just say, I do at the completion of this. I do solemnly swear or affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of this state, and I will faithfully perform the duties of firefighter for the Charter Township of Alpena under the appointment of the Fire Department according to the laws of the state of Michigan, County of Alpena and the Charter Township of Alpena for the best of my ability. So help me God. Thank you very much, Sean.
So. I've got a little, uh, little tribute to read and, uh, to let you know how this all goes. It's going to take this a second. Uh, but the, uh, tradition has been embedded in our service. Traditions do not only go back, uh, to the days of the new nation, but also can be traced to eleventh century of kings of Saint John, whose duty was to protect pilgrims in the Holy Land, but also to care for the sick and wounded. Their sixteenth century successors, the Knights of Malta, from where we have adopted the Maltese cross, were sworn to protect blessed fortunate, held a creed of honor, service, and integrity. Today, the only service in the United States of America that is authorized to enter a home, business, or property without a warrant to fight fire and protect property is the fire service. In our communities, we swear an oath to protect our citizens from ravage of deadly fire and to care for the sick and injured, uh, and also to carry on the tradition of gallantry, chivalry, and courage that the Knights of Saint John and the Knights of Malta, our predecessors swore to uphold. It is with, uh, it is not without risk. Every year, our media and its own statistics remind us of our fallen that have paid the ultimate sacrifice to uphold this oath. It is not to be taken lightly. We do, however, tonight use this occasion to celebrate the honor of those that have chosen to follow the path of compassion and servitude. This should also be a consent reminder that our community holds us to higher standards, one that should never be breached or extinguished. The shield badge, excuse me, the shield badge reminds us of shields the knights used to protect themselves and the Maltese cross of the origins and faith they chose to paint on their shields to identify them. Uh, it is an honor to swear in our newest and promoted members of the Charter Township of Alpena Fire Department, Ed Hoskinson, Jim Stackowitz, and promotion to Scott Waterson.
We're going to start off with Ed first. If you could, you want to come up and put a pin on Ed?
Russ.
I put an extra long pin in there in case you want to get him. And Beverly? Or? And last but not least, we got, uh, Lieutenant Waterson? Lee, if you'd like to do the honors. I, uh, would like to thank the board and all those that came for the pinning ceremony. I do believe there's some certificates as well. Uh, would you like me to hand those out?
Uh, actually, one by one, Mr. Hos- Hoskinson, if you would like to come up here, sign it, and then chief can.
Jim, as well. All three of you actually all have.
They might want pictures, so.
Yeah.
You handing it to them.
And I, there's a, a blue pen for you guys. That way you all sign them.
Yeah.
Just to make sure it's all blue.
It's a blue. It's a good pen to keep too, Scott. They write.
If it codes a lot of bills.
They write well.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Which is up to the win.
Okay. Um. So with that presentation being taken care of, we'll move forward to new business. We don't have any old business. Uh, so the first item of new business is the two thousand twenty-three benefit package renewals.
Blue cross package went up three point four two percent. Nathan and I reviewed it. My recommendation is we renew it as this. I don't think three point four two percent is much.
Well, no, and that would be my recommendation as well, uh, after looking at the proposed, uh, and also looking at referencing both, uh, union contracts. This is the stays current with both, uh, union contracts, uh, and the townships, which in there.
So staff recommendation then?
It'd be our, our, both our, our recommendation to move forward with the, uh, the first option is, uh, keeping things as similar to, uh, that they are today.
Did we get any other quotes?
Uh, did we? No.
We did not get any other quotes. We are required by law, though, to get quotes every third year. We did get quotes last year.
Yeah, so. I'm sure that's the best options. What to get?
Yes, yes.
I'll make a motion that we approve the two thousand twenty-three benefit package renewal as presented.
Or we have a motion and support, uh, further discussion? England, uh, roll call, please.
Christopher Ellery Summers.
Yes.
Trustee Kroll.
Yes.
Trustee Reiner.
Yes.
Trustee Paulie.
Yes.
Trustee Laughlin.
Yes.
Sir Palovich, yes. Supervisor Skibby.
Yes. Uh, moving forward, uh, in the new business is the Assured Partners of Michigan LLC, the Business Associate Agreement. Oh, you and Tim.
I kind of sent it to you, Tim, so maybe you can.
Uh, I guess the best way to, we briefly summarize it. It's a HIPAA requirement. Uh, when I wasn't an expert at the outset, just Googling it, they're all over the place, and they'll require met in order to, uh, protect the privacy, uh, of HIPAA protected information. So it's definitely a standard document. And I recommend that you go ahead and approve of that.
And I'll make a motion to approve the Business Associate Agreement with Assured Partners of Michigan.
We have a motion on the table to move forward with the, uh, Business Associate Agreement as presented. Is there support? Or it's been moved and supported. Further discussion? That was the best of my ability to look like a just a, a catchall for third parties to have access to HIPAA.
It's pretty sensitive. Bilateral.
Yeah.
We gotta, you know, we gotta do something, and then a sure partner is going to do something. So.
So, uh, any other discussion? Seeing none? Uh, there was no cost associated. I don't know. Uh, all those in favor of moving forward with the Business Association or Business Associate Agreement, uh, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed the same. Uh, it was passed. Uh, Tim, this one was in your wheelhouse. So number three, publicly funded health insurance contribution annual opt-out vote.
Yes, this is something we do every time around this time of the year. You have to do it before the end of the year under Michigan's Publicly Funded Health Insurance Contribution Act. In order to continue providing the level of health insurance coverage that you do for your employees, we need a two-thirds, uh, roll call vote, motion passed to, uh, well, I'll read the motion that I'm going to propose here and look at the township exempt itself from the requirements of the Publicly Funded Health Insurance Contribution Act, the upcoming medical benefit plan coverage year, and that allows you to keep continuing providing the level of coverage that you are.
Would you like to make such a motion?
I don't think they exactly.
Ah.
He kept it from last year.
All right.
So we have a motion on the table to move forward, uh, with the status of, uh, our medical insurance being exempt. Uh, is there support? Support. It's been moved and supported. Further discussion? Seeing none? Uh, all those in favor? Oh, we got a roll call. Yep, sorry. Roll.
Trustee Reiner.
Yes.
Trustee Paulie.
Yes.
Trustee Laughlin.
Yes.
Sir Palovich, yes. Treasurer Ellery Summers.
Yes.
Trustee Kroll.
Yes.
Supervisor Skibby.
Yes. Uh, moving on to the next item of new business is, uh, before you all see a, uh, a quote, uh, for engineering services. Uh, this is for a proposed, uh, continuation of bypass, uh, between Grant and U S twenty-three South. Uh, they're looking at, they'd look at both sides to actually figure out which side of the road is, uh, the best to move forward with, with all the variables. Um, but it would be my recommendation, uh, to move forward, um, with the proposal from Iran Engineering for five thousand five hundred dollars, uh, for all of the, uh, proposed, uh, engineering, uh, processes that would go into.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, we have a motion from, uh, Trustee Paulie to move forward with the engineering, uh, scope of services as presented in the letter. Is there?
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Further discussion?
Um, where's the money coming from?
Well, we're going to be, uh, making a budget amendment. Um, this would actually be coming out of, uh, one oh one, two six, five, nine, three, zero, 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 which is bypass maintenance, of which is currently not funded, uh, to the level of five thousand five hundred dollars. Uh, but in the, uh, budget adjustments, we had already looked at. That's not the budget adjustments. Um, having it in, we're talking about going to forty-five thousand or forty-five, additional forty-five hundred from, would really come out of one oh one, six nine nine, correct?
So are you taking that out of ARPA funds?
ARPA allocation, yeah. And moving it to two, six, five, nine, three, zero, 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 with.
Yeah, so you could leave. We'd have to add fifty-five hundred.
Yeah.
To this one, and then.
So this only covers one side. So there, that, this is this, the engineer, this is an implementation. So they're going to look at, because, uh, it was originally looked at and focused on being on the east side of Ripley at that point in time, uh, between century twenty-one and the old M S B police posts. Uh, the road commission gave a, uh, kind of wanted us to look at the other side. Um, but then the inherent, uh, complexity therein is that how many times do you want to cross a road to get across the road? Um, because right now all the, the bike path that's in existence on Ripley is on that same side. Um, there are some legs in between, uh, the old Western Union big boy down to Jimmy John's at, at Brook or X, sorry, at Grant. Um, but why would you force people on that side to get to twenty-three to have to cross back across Ripley to actually cross twenty-three? Because when M dot redid that intersection at twenty-three in Ripley, they only did bypass, uh, signal on the north side of that intersection.
Well, and not only that, isn't that parking lot at the Thunder Bowl?
Well, the Thunder Bowl, well, that's M dot right away.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, same as the front half of Continental Rental is in M dot right away, and actually about thirteen feet of south side stations in, in that right away. Um, yeah, so.
Never mind.
Yeah, there's, there's a lot of right away there at that stretch in twenty-three. Yes, well.
So this money would pay for the, their engineering service, but as far as actually doing the project, is it something we would budget?
That would be.
Next year's budget?
That would be, uh, an anticipation of next year's budget. The opposite.
Give us the cost.
This will tell us exactly what it will be.
I mean, they're also setting up all the bid documents to, 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 to that out to the contractors.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, I added that to it because I didn't want to do the bid letting.
No.
Why not let them? Um, are there, is there any other discussion? This is the, uh, the biggest missing link of bypass, non-motorized, uh, walkway in all of Alpena.
So this will be paid out of ARPA fund.
It would be paid out of ARPA funds, but it could be allocated through two, six, five. Yep. Yes.
This is probably something that should have been done years ago. Just kept get push off the burner.
Yeah, well, and we're coming, as we come into winter, now's the time to get engineering and some of a, a game plan together so that for next year's budget, we can look at it realistically or, or write grants accordingly. So. Uh, with that being said, yes.
I just want to reiterate, the motion is to approve the five thousand five hundred dollars to be paid from ARPA.
ARPA.
Okay.
Through the G L that would be denoted.
Right.
Two, six, five, nine, three, zero, 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 zero. Uh, there's no other discussion, questions, comments, uh, roll call, please.
Trustee Paulie.
Yeah.
Trustee Laughlin.
Yes.
Sir Palovich, yes. Treasurer Ellery Summers.
Yes.
Trustee Kroll.
Yes.
Trustee Reiner.
Yes.
Supervisor Skibby.
Yes. Uh, moving forward, uh, with the, uh, budget adjustments, um, with an adjustment to the adjustment. Um, the only addition to this besides the single two-page, uh, that was transfer in, transfer out, the building improvements, uh, was the fifty-five hundred dollars, uh, to be allocated from ARPA, uh, to G L two, six, five, nine, three, zero, 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 zero. Um, every department had a little bit of a maneuvering, uh, getting ready for this meeting. Uh, if there's no question site specific to any of the D Ls, I'll entertain a motion to move forward with the budget adjustments as presented.
Some move.
A motion to move forward with the budget adjustments as presented. Is there support? Or it's been moved and supported. Further discussion? Seeing none? Uh, roll call, please.
Trustee Laughlin.
Yes.
Sir Palovich, yes. Treasurer Ellery Summers.
Yes.
Trustee Kroll.
Yes.
Trustee Reiner.
Yes.
Trustee Paulie.
Yeah.
Supervisor Skibby.
Yes. Uh, next item of business, uh, six, treasurer investment recommendations, Laura.
So at our last meeting, we discussed, um, investments, and so I did some research and I got ahold of various, well, credit unions and, um, our banks that we do business with. And the best deal was through Huntington Bank, and they have something called, uh, um, Investment Portal. It's a liquidity, um, portal, and it's a hundred percent government-backed. It's a money market, and, um, basically, you can put money in and take it out at any time. You're not constrained. You're not penalized for taking money out early. Um, all of the funds that they recommend are all good, according to the, you know, lady I talked to. I said, is there one better than the other for us? And, um, she said the highest yield is to invest like by four o'clock of the day before the cutoff time. And, um, basically, we're just gonna get between like three point three five percent and up to three point seven percent on the money. So anyway, I, according to our investment policy, um, I do not have authorization to just automatically do this, so that's why it's brought to the board, um, for the board to authorize me to do these investments. So the, and one of the big things we talked about too was the ARPA money is to put that in one of these funds to, you know, gain better interest back on these. Uh, but we also have other funds, and I can create multiple liquidity accounts and draw a better interest on those as well. And I could just have multiple and name them different, even like the, you know, provisional water money, the ARPA money, the whatever. I can put these in there and take them out and, um, and gain, because nothing is close to this three point three five percent at this time.
I said, you know, we're currently getting.
That was going to be my question.
Well, uh, Laura, a couple of questions for you. I looked at several of the government fund ones. That's, that's the section that we're dealing with, right? We're not talking about the, uh.
Are you looking at paperwork? I think. Yep, yep.
I'm looking at the Huntington Liquidity Investment Portal.
Yep.
The treasury funds and the government funds. If, if I understand it correctly, we can invest in the government fund.
In any of these.
Own any of those.
Any of them. There's thirty, and she said any of them.
Can we invest in more than one?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, so exactly, because some of these, uh, the ones I looked at anyway, had very low fees. Does Huntington, I don't.
They're cheap.
No fees. Any, uh, no transfer fees.
No.
Move, and so we can move money, uh, from what I could gather, these basically, um, the, the rate sort of locks in for like thirty days. And so.
I mean, it's kind of honestly like a no-brainer to not, to not do this. I mean, it.
Oh, I. Why would you keep any money in a savings account?
One hundred percent agree.
Well, I wasn't aware of these, and, you know, when the question was brought up and I started.
I didn't look at any of the treasury funds, but, but I know that, um, any of these funds would be good. I, the Investco is an interesting one. The, the money portfolio one was an interesting one. Uh, but any of the BlackRock funds would be great.
Yeah, they, they own all of it. So yes, Russ.
The only, the only question I had is, is, uh, I take it, this is assumption on my part, Laura, um, that once we take, it's still within the bank. They're doing the investing. They're setting up these funds for us. But is it true then that these would not be any longer federally insured funds?
Um.
F D I C.
You know, I had that on my other note. Um, they are covered, the, the CDs are the two hundred, the federally insured. These are governmental.
Wait, CDs, these are money.
These are a hundred percent government securities.
I know they're government security. Yeah.
I guess.
Well, except BlackRock. I, you know.
Well, I'm not, I'm not.
These have such significant, uh, backgrounds. I mean, the BlackRock ones, for example, I think the man, the money managers have all been there at least like thirty-five years or something like that. I doubt that they're, that they're, any bank funded, any F D I C, I doubt that.
I don't think, yeah, that's what I'm wondering. I was assuming.
That sounded more like it was for the CDs.
But it, you know, obviously it's backed by the full credit of the United States.
Right.
Which, whatever that means.
Whatever that means.
So anyway, the, my recommendation is to recommend that, to authorize me to invest in government money market funds on the liquidity portal at Huntington Bank, and that the money shall remain sufficiently liquid to meet all operating requirements that may be reasonably anticipated.
I'll make the motion to at least pu- push the discussion more.
What does that mean, Dave?
I, I'll make the motion and I'll, I'll say some of that discussion.
I'll support it.
Okay, further discussion?
So how, which ones, are you going to take the advice of the, of the people at Huntington as to which ones to go with? And then do they, after thirty days, do they automatically renew, or do you have to?
I don't know that exact answer, but I can find that out. Um, she basically, as I said, do you recommend specific ones? And she said she'd recommend all of them, but pay attention to that four P M cutoff time and go with the ones that have the highest yield.
But, but the, otherwise, the, the investment knowledge is left in the hands of us.
Well, I can ask her any questions.
Yeah, it'd be nice to know that if there's, uh, the expertise, if they have the expertise, it.
Yeah, I mean.
Sense to have them tell us.
Well, and I can absolutely do that.
And then I think, uh, we should learn about the, uh, the renewal of them.
Very good question. Any other questions? Uh, we have, uh, motion and support. Any other questions, comments? Uh, to the motion that's on the table? Seeing none? Uh, roll call, please.
Sir Palovich, yeah. Treasurer Ellery Summers.
Yes.
Trustee Kroll.
Yes.
Trustee Reiner.
No.
Trustee Paulie.
Yes.
Trustee Laughlin.
Yes.
Supervisor Skibby.
Yes. Uh, okay, moving forward, uh, with the monthly water allocation to general fund. Who would you like to?
Um, as everybody's aware, we have a cash flow problem with the water fund. Um, in our budget, we had allocated four thousand five hundred dollars per month. We transferred from the water fund to the general fund to help cover some of the expenses of the buildings, occupancy bills, and everything we do for the water. We have not done it since August first, so we have not done September, October, or November's because the cash flow is not there. Um, so we have three options actually. Um, one is to, for every month that we have not paid, do a due to, due from. Journal entry so that it shows in our books that the water fund owes the general fund. Or we could make a motion to stop paying. The four thousand five hundred effective September first. Or we could also make the motion to stop paying it and have.
The five months.
The water, the general fund pay back the first five months of this fiscal year back to the water fund. So that there would have been no allocation through the whole fiscal year.
What I sent, pros and cons to each one of them.
Um. With the cash flow and the number of digs we've had, I don't see us being able to pay that back.
In this fiscal.
In this fiscal.
Yes, I just have a question. I mean, it just seems cleaner. To. Just not pay it what we've paid back, pay it, you know.
So that the whole year.
Do option three.
Yeah.
Is my opinion.
That's what Nathan and I talked about it too and we were.
Just to make it clean. Yeah.
Yeah, because then for auditing purposes, you don't have due tos, dues froms for a partial year and then having that footnote on, on as a finding. A, a potential finding. Um, and so why not? Look at it in, in retrospect and clean up the previous five that were already dispersed and allocated. Pay that back through the same exact channels. That way our fiscal this entire year is free and clear of that due to, due from.
Yeah.
So, yes, m- most definitely option three is the cleanest. Of all three and the most transparent when it comes to audit purposes. It would be our recommendation to, to exercise option three. Um, and to move forward, uh, with, uh. Resubmitting, uh, and, and rebating, if you will, uh, the allocations of the first few months. Uh, from Water Fund, uh, five, nine, two, uh, back to the general. And have general fund, uh, redistribute back to the exact same GLs and, and call it good for this fiscal.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion to move forward with option three.
And I will support it.
And we have support. Further discussion is trustee Paul.
Uh, round numbers, fifty thousand dollars.
Um.
Twenty two.
Twenty two, five is what would be paid back.
No, the whole year. It'll be enough.
Fifty four thousand.
Okay, fifty four thousand dollars. Is that going to be? Where's that money going to come from? It's, it's been, it's coming in as part of our income and all of a sudden it's not going to be there. Are we good? Is that being taken care of?
Well, right now I believe the allocation that comes from, uh, enterprise into the general fund is for administrative functions principally outside of just the allocation for square footage cost. Um, so that would come back into as a revenue, um. Really principally through Kelly and your, just your office, correct?
It's like admin and some utilities are included in that.
Yeah, I mean, is it a reduction of revenue? Yes, it's a reduction, but at least it's, it's an internal revenue stream coming from us to us. So it's not. Massively detrimental.
We're already in a.
Yeah.
Bind with. The water fund having.
So. It is the cleanest, it is the cleanest way out for this fiscal. So. Any other discussion?
We're still having those breakages I see from the.
Well, we're not going to openly discuss them because it's that time of year and we don't openly discuss things that we don't want to have come to reality. Yes.
It's early in the.
Well, yeah, no. So we have a motion and support to move forward with option three. Any further discussions? Seeing none, roll call please.
Treasure Elory Summers.
Yes.
Trustee Crawl.
Yes.
Trustee Reiner.
Yes.
Trustee Pauli.
Yes.
Trustee Laughlin.
Yes.
Sir Flavich, yes. Supervisor Skibby.
Yes. Uh, the next item of business, uh, it looks very familiar with one, uh, addition. Uh, it's the fee schedule for a water department. Uh, the only change, uh, on, it's a two-page document. The only change that you'll see is on the front page. Um. We had never given consideration to, uh, fire suppression taps. Um, so if a business needed to come in or any, but any other entity that needed fire suppression, we charge. The same full amount as if that service line is their principal structure or principal. Feed, uh, to our system. Fire suppression systems outside of just the initial phase testing and, uh. Hopefully, in a perfect world scenario, never have to be used. So why should the same benefit be charged to? Fire suppression systems that won't have. The capacity because really what you're paying for with water tap fees are a seat at the table in capacity. Uh, this doesn't add, this just cleans things up and allows. For more than enough money for the tap and for what little consumption there would be for testing purposes. This more than makes, uh, us whole. I spoke with Ms. Winn about this. Um. She says. Not out of sorts to have a separate because if you look at the remaining of our water caps, those are principal feed lines to business. So. This puts a, a fire suppression system in between a, uh, one and a, I believe, a one and a quarter and a two inch tap, which is more than enough. Um, for like I said. Thousand gallons for hydrostatic pressure testing in, in a fire suppression system, so.
What would be the fee?
It'd be just a five thousand dollar fee.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, instead of saying, so we have newer businesses coming, uh, if they need a four inch fire suppression system. Th- that four inch tap is fifteen thousand dollars.
So this would just be a flat.
This flat.
Fire suppression. Regardless of the size of the pipe.
Yeah.
Okay.
Cause it doesn't have continual use.
Right, and then when it's. So, so let's heaven forbid it's used.
We actually have a TBD on our fee schedule that, that is the exact catch up. What is, and that can be something that we can bring right back. What are we going to charge for fire sprinkler system usage? Uh, that would be a board determining, um. Factor there. But we didn't have fire suppression, uh, and. When you start looking at it and having. You know, a, a two inch for, for principal, uh, potable water at seventy five hundred dollars and then a service line that they'll never use other than its tap.
Yeah.
At twenty or at, at a very high number. This makes it more palatable for hopefully developers and for developers to actually implement fire suppression. Especially in commercial capacity. Yes.
I have a question for Steve if I might, um, uh, is, uh, when a fire suppression system is used. In a fire, presumably, if someone's smoking too close, um, the, um. Is that water charge? Uh. Get covered by insurance policies typically?
Well, it depends upon what happened. You know, there, there is something called sprinkler leakage coverage, which takes care of like. Beds and stuff like that getting wet or whatever it would be, but no, if, 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 if it's otherwise carelessness or somebody. Knocking that little red pin out of there and just to see how much water will come out of it, uh, kind of a cost to doing business.
But, but in terms of a fire where you're using a lot, right? And would that be part of the fire?
Oh, good question. I don't know the answer to that. Um, is it, would it be recoverable just like a fire department would come in and? Put a hose on it?
And is there a limit on the coverage that normally would be given?
That's a good question. I, I don't really answer that.
Stumping insurance guy. Yes, trustee Pauli.
Can we get a date put on this? There's no date on there.
There is on the.
There is on the second page.
Yep. Hey Nathan, we're, so you're revising the fee schedule?
Yes.
Okay, and our, our ordinance requires to do this by a resolution, so I, I brought the old one.
Okay.
I can read it.
By all means.
When you're ready.
Well, I.
And then I'll fill it out tomorrow and give it to Michelle and then you'll attach the new fee resolution.
This one, I mean, there are a lot, uh, to be determined on here.
Yep.
Is this something that we should? Be, uh, looking at like having to be look at and say. This is the appropriate amount of coming back to the board with it?
Uh, I can sit down with them and bring back some recommendations because, yeah, trustee Laughlin brings forward a good thing. It's. There, there should be a catch basin so that we're not on the hook for, for fighting that fire and it, as an internal suppression system. But. It shouldn't also be an economic hindrance as well. So I think by looking at that, we could probably say, because none, there is not a system that has fire suppression on, on a meter. I think the only place that would have fire suppression on a meter by default would be, uh, Alpena Mall and CRTC. So it's very atypical. Um. But this, we can bring back, I can bring back some recommendations from, from Kath and Nate and the guys.
Well, I didn't know that. So, so the fire suppression systems are just. We don't know how much water do you?
No, uh, we can look at people's from, uh, Michigan State Police report that reported eighteen inches of standing water in the door. Uh, previous employee said there was only three inches in laugh, but our rough calculation of one point eight million gallons of water that we have to pay for. Percolated into that asphalt. Yeah, so.
So that, that you, your, your answer there left a question for me that I think you kind of covered, but. So are we now required for any commercial development meters on that?
I, that, in Michigan building code, I think it's already depending on its use and occupancy and square footage is already in MBC. Now that leads a, a very good point of we're still up and we're getting away from this topic, but. Michigan building code, uh, we're still only operating on twenty fifteen. Uh, we'll have to give consideration to upping that to probably twenty eighteen Michigan building code, uh, if not even newer. Uh. But yeah, so to answer that, Kevin's not here right now, but I believe to a large extent. Fire suppression is put into commercial activity pretty much right out the gate.
Russ, I think then to answer your question. If, if it's not metered, how, how would they know?
How would we, uh, how do we have a bill?
Yeah, so the burden of proof would fall back upon the township.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, no, it wouldn't be covered under that situation.
Yeah, and, and then at what point can be, because I just did a rough calculation from the nine one one call in terms of the people's break. Uh, and then cross referenced it with four different people's stories. Uh. And it was a lot more than three inches of standing water. So how, how do you look at that? Because when you look at our gross percentage of in our enterprise fund of over thirty percent of water loss. That could just simply be in a quarter, that could be one residential lead. That could be your. That could be your thirty percent. You have, uh, a fire, an actual fire. There's water consumption that we have to give consideration to because. E- every gallon that comes through those meters, doesn't matter what it's used for, we, we get that bill. So identifying and looking at it and determining what that cost would be for a fire suppression system is something that we. Need to. Continue to work towards.
Not to belabor it, but I would imagine MTA probably has a lot of those already answered.
Some, but it's.
Okay.
It's a little weird when you get into fire suppression system.
I just wondered if there was other municipalities that maybe have other language.
Yeah, and I have Kath looking into total what is typical for fees because when I threw even a lower number at, she's like, that's. Not unheard of. So I, I went with something that was more palatable and make sure that we, we do not, we encapsulate all costs. Um. And, yeah, give a little bit of reprieve rather than having to have any company spend considerable amount of money for. Oh, a service line that's really after it's hooked up, hopefully. Good Lord willing, they never have an issue with their fire suppression. So. We have a motion and support.
No, we have no motion.
Oh, of course. So we have, uh, well, Tim's going to read us a wonderful little resolution.
Yeah, so this is what it'll say. Whereas the Charter Township of Alpena Board of Trustees, Trustees adopted ordinance number one thirty nine. Charter Township of Alpena Sanitary Sewer and Water Ordinance during this July twenty second, two thousand and nineteen regular meeting and. Whereas section eighteen of ordinance one thirty nine calls for the establishment of rates and charges for the installation of connection to and use of water and sewage disposal systems. For the purpose of recovering the cost of construction, reconstruction, maintenance, repair, operation and replacement of the systems. And whereas section eighteen of ordinance number one thirty nine provides that such rates and charges shall be established by resolution of the Township Board of Trustees. Now therefore be it resolved. With the Charter Township of Alpena pursuant to section eighteen. Ordinance number one thirty nine establishes the sanitary sewer and water ordinance rates and charges as set forth in the attached document titled. Charter Township of Alpena Department of Public Works Sanitary Sewer and Water Ordinance Schedule of Rates and Charges and be a further resolved. The changes to such rates and charges shall be accomplished to the adoption of further resolutions of the Township Board of Trustees. So just a motion and I'll fill out everything and get that to Michelle. Motion and second.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion on the table. Is there support? Support. It's been moved and supported. Uh, roll call please.
Trustee Crawl.
Yes.
Trustee Reiner.
Yes.
Trustee Pauli.
Yes.
Trustee Laughlin.
Yes.
Sir Flavich, yes. Treasure Elory Summers.
Yes.
Supervisor Skibby.
Yes. Uh, moving forward in the agenda, uh, next item is a invoice from Dixon Engineering. Uh, this is, uh, a fee for the M thirty two tower. Um. And actually I have a, a question for you, Mr. Laidle. Is this, uh, and I know I'm, I'm catching you kind of off, off topic. Is this? A fee that was in the original projection for the M thirty two or is this above and beyond?
Oh, I don't have that.
Okay. It's. That it was the maintenance inspection.
Yeah, that needed dry inspection of the paint. You have that needed dry inspection of the paint and model line without the paint. This is either any other critical damage that was done from last year when we called the whole.
Okay. So this may have already been kind of addressed in a previously, in a previous motion potentially, but nonetheless, this, this four thousand five hundred and twenty five dollars would have to come out of five, nine, two, five, three, seven, eight, zero, one, zero, zero, zero. Professional and contractual.
Would we pay this out of ARPA fund?
The original allotment was through ARPA, so I want to, I'll go back. And make sure that this was part of that allocation. If not, then it would still have to come out of eight, zero, one, professional and contractual. As it would be.
Did you say five, nine, two, five, three, seven, eight, zero, one?
Yeah, that's correct.
Zero, zero, zero.
Zero, zero, zero. Professional and contractual. You do it on maintenance on system at nine, three, zero, but this would be in terms of the, a lot of our other previous coatings this follows suit.
My reflection is we appropriated. Reverse.
I, I want to say that we did, but nonetheless.
We did too as part of the ARPA.
I'm pretty certain that we did. Uh, so even with that appropriation, it'll still go through five, nine, two, five, three, seven, eight.
So it will be paid out of ARPA funds if we do, when we do the motion.
Yeah. Yes, because I, I believe it already was.
So we just want to double motion this.
No, don't miss double motion. That's where. We like our double motions. So, uh, at that, with that being said, uh. I'll entertain a motion to move forward with the, uh, the invoice of four thousand five hundred and twenty five dollars through Dixon Engineering, uh, to utilize ARPA funds to be. Allocated to five, nine, two, five, three, seven, eight, zero, one, zero, zero, zero.
I make a motion.
What do you say? Motion to that effect, support.
Yes.
Been moved and supported.
You made.
Russ, move. Stay supportive. Any further discussion? Seeing none, uh, roll call please.
Trustee Reiner.
Yes.
Trustee Pauli.
Yeah.
Trustee Laughlin.
Yes.
Sir Flavich, yes. Treasure Elory Summers.
Yes.
Trustee Crawl.
Yes.
Supervisor Skibby.
Yes. Uh, moving forward, uh. With the next item of business is the mission statement for your department.
Well, again, uh. As requested by the board, uh, we had talked, I had presented a mission statement to the, uh, board here. Uh, a couple of meetings ago and it was recommended that we take that before the fire committee to finalize some different, uh, wording on that. Uh, there were just a couple of minor changes that were recommended by the fire committee. Uh, it's in your packet, uh, the, the final. Verbiage we come up with, uh, is my recommendation that the board accept our, uh, the fire department mission statement as proposed in this, uh, agenda and, uh. I'll wait for your direction.
So we have a recommendation to move with the, uh, the fire department mission statement. Uh, I did actually have one question about the last portion of the, uh, sentence and division statement. Um, beginning with, uh, in between staff and, and last, um. I guess my question is, does that fragment, does that? Need to be in there because I, I follow it every, I'm following it word for word and then it just seems like. Need to be in there because I, I follow it every, I'm following it word for word and then it just seems like on, under the, the vision statement.
Yeah.
The last sentence. I mean.
And seek out.
And seek out. Every opportunity, I mean.
Yeah, we, we sort of bounced around with the trying to, trying to, uh, shorten up the. Some of the things I, I don't have the original one that, uh, chief put together, but we shortened the mission statement. And I, I, we, we talked a little bit about essentially what you just said, uh, and it was a little clunky.
Yeah, just because it.
And so, but I think the, I think the idea was that we not. Lose opportunity, that we, that we seek out those things, um, to, to, to better fire department whenever we could, whether it be through. Um, professional training or, or other seminars or whatever it might be, but it, it, I, I don't disagree. It was a, got a little clunky.
Yeah.
But I think that we also found that to be true in several, uh, other sort of Google vision statements.
I, I'm, I'm sure.
Some of them were very lengthy.
Oh, my gosh.
So we, uh, we trimmed it down as best we thought we could. Um, I, I think it's a pretty good final document at this point. I mean, uh. Pleasure, pleasure of the board.
Yeah, I make a motion that we, uh, accept the mission statement, vision statement and core values as presented by the, uh, fire committee and, and Chief Hanson.
We have a motion on the table to move forward with the recommendation. Is there support?
Support.
It's been moved and supported for the discussion. Seeing none. All those in favor of the mission statement, uh, vision statement and the core values signified by saying aye. Oppose the same. Training officer chief.
All right, uh. Since I've been here, I've had Lieutenant Stevens in an acting capacity as training officer for the department. And since we've put, uh, Jim Stackwitz in position, uh, he's an instruction coordinator. He's got every qualification you can think of for training. Uh, I've asked him to step up to be our department, uh, training officer. I think the pleasure of the board's had to sit in his classes on CPR and first aid or something like that. I think, uh. If you've, if you've been to one of Jim's classes, you can tell his professionalism and his knowledge of the job. And, uh, we enjoy having him. We're finally, we're really getting to learn a lot of stuff in our, uh, trainings. We're getting accredited courses in-house for EMS. Uh, which is huge. Uh, we don't have to even think about it. The paperwork's done. Uh, it's turned into the state. We look at our little portal and it's in there already. Jim's got the job done. And it's my recommendation that we put Jim in that capacity of training officer for the fire department.
I'm making a motion that we, uh, approve Jim Stackwitz as the fire department training officer.
We have a motion on the table to move forward with the recommendation. Is there support?
I have a question.
I'll support.
Okay, so we have motion and support. Uh, yes.
Sorry.
Yeah.
Um, my question is, is, um, just for clarification, um. Is, first of all, is Chris the? Is he doing this at Soulside and now?
Chris was in an acting capacity as training officer, and the reason why it needs to be a motion of the board. Cause it's an official title through the state of Michigan, through the firefighters training council, that he'll be recognized for anything. Training related through the state and Jim will be notified for any of that type of stuff as well as myself. So.
Chris won't be that anymore.
He will not. I will thank him for his time of, uh, acting in that capacity, however.
And then.
Go ahead.
I'm just a follow-up question. So I just didn't know per the state, does it have to be training officer or could it be training? Instructor coordinator or something like that? Just because we don't really have like officers.
They, they refer to them through the firefighters training council as office.
Officer, okay. I was just wanting clarification. Thank you.
Yeah, the other question I had, Mark was, well, they're not the, uh. Let me first say this. I was in that training that Jim did here for us and, uh. I've had training similar at the county level, uh, nine one one offices and. And through the shares department and different things. And it was excellent. To me, he did as good a job or better than other trainings I've had. And, uh. But is there a training certificate requirement or some sort of, does the training officer have to be trained or certified for that position?
Right, he's a instructor coordinator. Is it two, Jim?
Instructor coordinator, licensed instructor coordinator for the state for EMS.
Right.
And I am a fire instructor one for the state of Michigan.
Needs a qualification.
He, he definitely meets the qualifications, yes.
Any other discussion? Uh, well, let's do it by additional economic. Uh, we can, uh. Go by voice book.
Excellent.
Um, all those in favor of, uh, moving forward with the recommendation of, uh, making Mr. Stackwitz a training officer, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same. Next item, first responder training recruitment grant.
Right, uh, so as the board's probably aware, uh, myself and actually Supervisor Skibby was the, the author of the. Particular, uh, grant for training and recruitment, uh, materials. He wrote the, uh, grant. I fed him a few numbers here and there, but he, he knew most of the numbers. So, uh, but he put in for a grant for us. We gave him a list of all the different equipment that we were interested in having. Such as CPR training dummies is a various, I've included them in your packet. Uh, but anyhow, we were, uh. Awarded a, a grant for forty-one thousand, five ninety-seven, thirty-six, uh, through the state of Michigan. And, uh, at this point in time, uh, before this grant. Gets to a cycle where we can't. Spend the money. I would, I'm just requesting that, uh, even though we've got the approved grant, uh, I don't know what the process is if I have to re, formally request. To spend those i- items to get these things coming. Uh, but anyhow, I've put in here, uh, that. We would make that original, make these original purchases. Now I will say, there's been some price increases since we applied for these grants. So I don't know if we're going to be able to get everything that we've had on this list. We will, as our, as my training officer, and I will sit down and figure out if. If prices have gone up to the point where, you know, we might not be able to get a certain thing or whatever. I'm going to let him make that determination. What's going to be the most viable for our purposes of training? So, uh, we'll still have to keep within our forty-one thousand, five ninety-seven, however, but, uh, I would like to start that process before prices go up even more and they just been going up. Uh, just crazy here lately. So I don't, I'm not sure what the process is.
Same as any other purchase. Uh, yeah, we did get the grant, um. But it would still have to come same as Lexible, still has to come before the board for expenditure over, uh, was it five hundred and five hundred? So, yeah, I mean, this is what I felt their reimbursement. So from May, you can, you could have started spending money. My question is. These GLs that may be coming out of nine, seven, six, but where is your revenue? Cause you're going to have to be making amendments and adjustments to probably your millage because these are all reimbursement grants. So your, your millage for equipment. Could be used to offset.
Right.
Um, but all of them. Would still have to come back before the court.
I have, I don't know the protocol on this. But. Why couldn't, since it's going to be a re- reimbursement funds. Couldn't we take the money? From the ARPA money and then reimburse.
They already have money in the millage equipment GL.
I know, but I, I, I'm only, I'm trying to look into the future a little bit because.
I, I can help with this budget adjustment that we'll need to do. It's a simple budget adjustment. We will do a credit to a revenue account for the grant money coming in. And then once Jim and our chief decide what, um, expenditures they're going to make. We will debit that for an expense as a budget adjustment. So they will balance each other out.
I get that, that, that completely makes sense. And so, but what I was wondering, because we have, uh, the equipment millage sunsets. And so that additional funds won't be coming in. And so I was just thinking maybe just out loud and maybe it's not something you can do, but to take the money from ARPA. And then reimburse into the equipment fund.
So is this two oh five, three, three, six, nine, seven, six? Is that the millage?
That is.
Okay, before we even spend the money, we will do a budget adjustment out of the correct GL, whether it be. Equipment or supplies. It won't have to touch ARPA funds. It won't have to touch the equipment knowledge at all.
Yeah.
That, that is why I brought this to the fire committee because I wasn't sure the process and we, we talked about it at length here, uh, the last fire committee meeting. So. I just wasn't sure. So.
It's just, it's a simple budget adjustment and I can help you guys with that and we can have it at the next meeting.
Yes.
Well, I, I'm a little confused between the conversation of the two of you. Um, so you said it's a reimbursement grant, so I assume the money has to be spent before we get the money in.
Correct.
So, uh, what Michelle then said is, is not the case. In other words.
No, that it is the case. I'm just adjusting the budget. To show that we're going to be getting this revenue in and that we will have this just.
Whatever, whatever line name you take it out of, uh, money will be put back in that line.
Not in that line item because we'll show it as revenue, not as an expense. When we get the grant money, that's a revenue.
But we've budgeted X amount or is that?
We have not budgeted anything for receiving a grant, so we have to. Put that in our budget as revenue and then we can offset it with the expense.
But I do believe if we take it to use it out of the millage fund.
We will not take it out of the millage fund.
Okay.
So why can't we?
And I'll let you guys take over my administrative function of it. So you guys can have.
So why can't we prove up to this amount based on inlet? Because we didn't have never done, I guess, where do you want to start and where do you want to stop? Of, so you wanted this carte blanche forty-one thousand?
Well, part of it's already spent.
Two thousand, because that price actually went down. The Lexible.
A little bit, yeah.
Did you say it was two thousand? I just, I, that was going to be a question.
Twenty-four, twenty-five hundred dollars down from, I think it was originally scoped at like forty-two.
Yeah.
Oh, I mean, then we're going to be looking at another month by the time we come back and.
When does it have to be spent by?
Twenty twenty-six. Oh, it's all ARPA related. Oh, this first responder grant program?
Yeah.
Uh, I think they have. Yeah, I'd have to, I'll pull that up for you guys.
Yeah, I don't have the dates myself.
So we have time, so. We have time, yeah. They just, they didn't open up the reimbursement portal until mid, late October.
Yeah.
They didn't even have.
Just kind of my only concern.
In May, we didn't even know how to reimburse, submit reimbursement.
I wouldn't figure out exactly what you want to buy and once you have that.
Right.
Meet with me and we'll figure out the budget adjustments. So we can get it.
Just because I've, then we got these lists of prices here. We've seen about a forty percent increase across the board for anything fire EMS related. That's just, it's ridiculous.
So does it, does, does the chief getting together with you to figure out what it is that they need and wants and so on? Does that stall this another thirty days?
The purchase thing?
Hmm.
I, I'm just doing the budget.
Well, the chief and, and.
And I'm in. Yeah.
Jim, I'm going to get together to figure out.
Jim and yeah, we'll figure.
Figure out what, what you're going to buy, what your prices are.
We really can't until you know what your order is. We need, then we can figure out what GL to pay it out of. And it might be several that we're adjusting depending on what you're.
Well, if it helps any, I mean, the, what we're going to order is everything in this list. Provided, something cannot be purchased because we don't have enough money, then we'll drop off, least prioritize thing.
And that's what you're asking us for, isn't it? Approval of that list.
That's correct.
Less any deductions you have to make because of price increase.
Right, right. Yep.
I, I. You're having a problem with that, Michelle? Is that?
I've been having a problem with that, but we shouldn't order anything until we have the correct budget adjustments in the GLs. And I have no idea what those are right now. I mean, I didn't know that. I guess I'm not sure. I didn't understand what this was. This is the first I've gotten it within my board packet.
But we might not.
And we shouldn't.
Is next month either. Cause if prices go up, if, if they find out that it.
I'm just trying to make sure we don't have any findings in our. Before we've adjusted a GL, I don't know how to adjust the GLs.
And we've. Yeah, we don't make, I mean, this is accounting one oh one. Just everybody's on the same page. We don't make except.
But could a motion be made? I, I think like somebody said up to that dollar amount. We've certainly done that in the past where we've made a motion to spend such and such, not to exceed such and such.
But your main thing is, is the budget adjustment to make sure we're not spending something that's not in there. That's what Michelle's whole point is.
And he can't spend, it's, we can't spend the money till the budget adjustment is done. And we can't make the budget adjustment till I know where it's got to go into what GLs.
So can they get with you on when they get an item?
Yeah, we're, I think we're going to end up having a special meeting in December, so.
Well, we will have a special meeting.
Okay, so let's get.
Our ducks in a row.
Yes, and I, I will help out with the budget adjustment for sure.
And I'll get you all the administrative function paperwork because then you're going to be taking it from here on out. Easy. Okay, so we, do we have a, a recommendation or a, a motion to this? Because we don't. What? How do we want to word it?
What would our motion be to do?
Yeah, right now.
For Jim and the chief.
I mean, we're going to have, you have two weeks, two weeks, enough time to get your, your. I mean, you have said, this is, you've had it since May, so.
Well, we'll try to do that the best we can on that.
Yeah.
Yeah, because I know we can't really make, I mean, we can't make a motion.
I, I just wanted to ask, so when you go get these prices, are you going to try to get more than one price? I mean, try, I mean, obviously you'll look for the best price for all these items.
That's typically what we do, but right now it's pretty tough just getting people to call you back.
So what I'm hearing from the clerk is we can't just make a. A blanket motion to approve expenditures without.
Spend money unless there is, that GL is funded. Bottom line, that's the law.
So, so is there a way to make the motion that we know we've got, uh, well, we've paid for the Lexible, but we have the remainder of that grant?
So I don't know what, uh, the motion we're making.
So we can't make a motion to.
Unless you know what GLs and.
Yeah, unless it's all come out of.
Cause some of it's medical, some of it's fire training.
That's correct, yeah.
So you're talking.
So you have two different, at least two different GLs.
I, I think we're going to be meeting within two or three weeks.
Get it together.
And we'll get all our ducks in a row and present it and.
Hey, we can get you to sit down with us and we'll just go.
Yeah, definitely. Get your list together and what the prices are and I will help out. And get the budget adjustments so that we are ready.
Show the information you need. Okay, uh, so with no business needing to be conducted on, uh, that. Grant. We will, uh. We'll put this on the agenda for the subsequent meeting.
Yes.
So that it's known. Uh, next item is, uh, frontline services hose quote.
Okay, uh, back a couple of months ago or a month and a half ago, we had our hoses, uh, professionally tested. Uh, basically for the first time, uh, we had. Some failures out there and we have an opportunity to, uh, get some hose at a pretty reasonable price. Um, we had a thousand fifty foot of two and a half inch hose that failed during the testing. And it really wasn't because it was bad, it was out of date. It was prior to nineteen eighty-seven. So, uh, automatically per NFPA standards, they had to fail it. Uh, now there were some that did fail, uh, but so. We have an opportunity that I learned of, uh, through R and R. They had Livonia Fire Department had ordered. Uh, thirteen lengths of, uh, two and a half inch hose. And when SnapTite, the manufacturer of the, the product, sent it to Livonia Fire Department. They said it has the wrong threads on it. They are on a Detroit standard thread down in Livonia. And the rest of the world is on a national hose, national standard thread. So, uh, that being said, uh, Rick from R and R called me and said, hey, uh, do you guys have any interest in any hose? And this is two price increases ago that was priced, and rather than them sending it back to SnapTite, the manufacturer. They're willing to pass along that deal to us and that thirteen sections at three hundred and twenty-two dollars and fifty cents a, a section. Uh, and now the new current price for the same one section hose is four hundred and fifty-one dollars. So I took it before the fire committee, uh, and as it stands, we have no rack hose of two and a half inch right at the present time. We were able to maintain our trucks with what we had on our rack, so we kept our compliment, but we have no spare hose of, uh, supply line hose. If we have a winter time fire here or anything like that, we have nothing to switch on to another truck, uh, frozen hose or anything like that. So bringing that up to the fire committee, it's my recommendation that we take the opportunity, even though they only have thirteen lengths of this. And, and ultimately, uh, we're gonna need another eight lengths just to replace what we've lost in our testing. I'm gonna try to include that on next year's, uh, budget, uh, for equipment. But it's my recommendation that we go ahead with the purchase of the thirteen lengths of, uh, two and a half inch hose. Uh, and, uh, you'll see the, uh, the slip there, thirteen lengths fifty foot, uh, six hundred and fifty foot. For four thousand one ninety-two fifty from GL two oh five three three six nine seven six.
I don't imagine there's, tell me if there is such a thing as a recertification of the existing hose. That's still good, that didn't get, that wasn't damaged, but is out of date. Is there anything about getting a recertification to date forward that after it's inspected by somebody?
There's not, uh, because with that date, it met a, it met a deadline of. Everything after that, such a date could be testable and you could show your service records, but anything prior to nineteen eighty-eight. Uh, has to be taken out of service.
So why is the like expected life of this hose your proposal?
So it's got a ten year guarantee, just like everything else does in the industry. Uh, so, uh, basically. You know, when we drag our stuff through burning whatever or over sharp, whatever, who knows what's gonna happen to it. Uh, but I, I think we, we need to take the opportunity because as it stands right now, we're in a critical. Uh, situation, we have no spare hose sitting in the rack if we have a fire. This would at least get us to equip back up a truck if we have a structured fire and we need, you know, to put a new. Uh, another six hundred foot of two and a half inch hose on and we can quickly get that on and get the other stuff up, wash, dry and. Whatever else it takes to get that back in service. But at least this point, we've, we've got, that would be a big help. Yes.
Um, my question is, there also is a quote for the eight.
Right, so.
So are you, next year on the budget, were you gonna pay that out of the equipment mileage?
So that is only there for show and tell right now. The fire committee asked me to find out what the current price was. Uh, you know, so we could see the difference of what we're saving from two price increases ago, the original thirteen sections that they. Were going to sell the Livonia Fire Department. But the fire committee asked me, well, what it's gonna cost right now. So the difference from, uh, three twenty-two fifty to four fifty-one. That's two price increases ago and I would assume there's gonna be more price increases coming.
So I guess my question is, if we're gonna pay this next fiscal year out of the equipment mileage. Why wouldn't we just do it right now out of the equipment mileage?
Well.
And, and we would have all the hose.
Because then the remaining eight are just gonna continue to ratchet up, so we're gonna have the same conversation.
Believe me, I'm all for that.
Well, I, it just. What's, say, if we're gonna pay it out of the equipment village, let's just do it right now and get it before it goes off anymore. That's the motion I would make that we bought.
Based on your recommendation, I'd like to make that.
And eight from frontline services.
Based on your recommendation, I would like to make that correction to my motion or proposal.
Well, I'm making that motion.
I support.
We have a motion and support on the table for the discussion.
Supported by trustee Laffin.
Now, I will say the thirteen sections will come right away because they have that in stock. The other eight we will have to wait for, uh, but that would be a good, good stroke of business and I might even be able to tune them up a little bit better on price. If I can tell them that we're gonna get it all.
So we don't have any more eight pre-eighty-eight hose, correct?
Uh, no.
And, and if so, did you identify how you can identify pre-eighty-eight hose and so we can throw it away before we spend money on it tested?
Yeah, so we have a whole pallet of old hose out there. We're gonna pull all that out. Everything's. Uh, that's gonna be prior to nineteen eighty-eight, it'll have a big X in it. That'll just go to wherever we can get rid of it. Uh, we're gonna look in to see what, where we, if anybody's, if there's a market for it, just to try and sell it.
I've already looked. There's a company that makes wallets, some handbags and such, uh, but they wanted us to ship it out to the East Coast.
Right. No, I will, I will say this much. There, there's been a recommendation by a couple of different people, why don't we send it to a third world country that could use it and they don't care about the dates? Uh, if they want to pay for the shipping costs or something like that, maybe it's some of that sort of effort. Uh, but I guess I should probably ask for a request for disposal after this.
Well, they, they have no inherent value. They don't meet our need, then you destroy them. You, you cut them off, the, the, all, all your, because you have scrap. That's all aluminum. I would imagine all your threaded ends are all aluminum.
Aluminum or brass.
Chrome moly, yeah, no brass, because they're not that heavy, uh, and it's not that expensive. Um, so cut off your, your cans, all your, all your caps, put them in the recycling bin and throw all that hose in the dumpster. That way you don't have to worry about another municipality grabbing hose and it's not certified and.
Yep.
Yes.
Um, I just want clarification on, uh, your, your motion, Michelle.
Yeah.
Um, you had thirteen lengths from R and R.
For the.
And the eight for FLSI.
But that's frontline, that's more money. That's four seventy-nine seventy-five.
There are eight from somewhere else.
There, there, there is a secondary quote from R and R.
So we have a friendly amendment to the motion maker. What was your friendly amendment?
To get the additional aid from R and R at a price of three thousand six hundred and eight dollars.
Well, you'll notice that there's, shipping must be added, estimating at two hundred dollars.
So, how is it in the world of everything that needs to be shipped? The only department that can't get calculated shipping cost seems to be fire departments. Well, they're here every other day, they can drop it off. There's, there's our shipping.
And the one.
I'm gonna work on that too.
Well, if whether or not this, this shipping cost is from whoever manufactures it to R and R, or is that?
I think that's typically the way it is from the manufacturer. I'll get clarification for the fire committee.
To us, and if they're already driving some of it up, maybe they can just hit your eye.
Yeah, I will, I will, I'll wheel and deal that from my side to see if what I can do.
That's reasonable.
So the one quote says delivery is free.
Right.
The second one says.
He's coming up to do testing on other trucks and stuff. He says, all this bring it up for free.
Well, it's like if you can fit thirteen hoses, you can fit.
So we'll buy eight. They'll waive the two hundred dollars.
We'll see, I'll try.
Okay, well, my motion says to include shipping. We can, okay, I don't want it coming back here because we didn't pay for shipping.
Is that part of the friendly?
That's part of my.
Lots of the support, we have, okay, we have a motion, a friendly motion and friendly or support, uh, moving forward with the purchase of. Uh, twenty-one total lengths of two and a half inch, uh, hose, uh, to be paid out of two oh five three three six nine seven six zero zero zero. Any other discussion? Seeing on roll call, please.
Clerk Clavich, yeah. Treasurer Ellery Summers.
Yes.
Trustee Crawl.
Yes.
Trustee Reiner.
Yes.
Trustee Polly.
Yeah.
Trustee Laffin.
Yes.
Supervisor Skitty.
Yes. Moving forward. To.
Let me catch up to myself here. There we go. All right, uh, next would be the recommendation of a purchase of a Ford F- one fifty-four by four pickup. Uh, fire committee, uh, has recommended the approval of the purchase. Uh, pickup Ford, well, their VIN numbers included there from Dean Arbor Ford. Uh, and that was a total of thirty-nine, eight sixty-one ninety-seven from GL two oh five three three six nine seven six zero zero zero. And I do have, uh, a couple incidental costs that, that would be added to that. Like the emergency lights installation, uh, we have most of the lights. We're gonna pay somebody to put, put them on. Uh, we need a siren speaker, uh, there's an onboard charging system and a tunnel cover. Uh, the total with the turnkey package near site and come up with is forty-two thousand. For the, uh, truck. And that was a recommendation by the fire committee, uh, for me to bring it forward to the board.
So you don't have any of those extra costs printed out or anything for us?
Uh, no, I do not. I was speaking with Laura earlier today and she wanted to make sure that I got the incidentals down. I can get you a copy of that if you'd like. Um, but it's emergency lights, uh, installation. What was that?
Cash likes pictures, as we heard earlier. It's a difference between firemen and a police officer. Police officers like more photos.
So.
Right under.
I, I will point out that the, uh, the price would also include, and I didn't get one for everybody, but there's a premium. Uh, warranty package for three years, thirty-six thousand miles bumper to bumper. Uh, that was, uh, put onto that. If anybody would like to see that, I'll pass that around.
Was that seventeen fifty? That sticks in my head, something like that. The cost of that. Twenty-five forty. Okay.
It was three years.
Three years, thirty-six thousand.
Yep.
So the. Okay, I guess my question, and being in the used cars market myself, is why are we jumping into a market that is losing one point four percent? Every single week for the past eleven weeks.
Well, couple of, couple of things. Uh, we're, uh, we had a lot of discussion on this and I was, uh. We don't know when these new vehicles are, we don't know where they are in the process. We don't know if there's a, been a VIN number assigned. We, we don't know any of that.
Well, we haven't even given them green light to even purport when they came to the last board meeting. It, it sounded like they had pushed that same order, but did they even push that same order coming into twenty twenty-three?
So they had to amend, oh, oh.
Because then why, we won't have a date.
So, so they had to amend it. Well, we approved the twenty-twos, uh, and the twenty-twos have been timed out. Uh, and so then they just essentially changed it to a twenty-three. I, I hadn't thought about that. And so, and so.
That's what Terry said.
Well, and that's, and that's, and I guess that would be my hesitation. Why would we get into a, a bad financial instrument? Being a used car to turn around if we have two, that's, that's my.
To, to answer your question, yes, there's of course a, a price adjustment. I don't remember what he said it was. If, I don't remember it being a significant amount of money. Gosh, if it was two percent, it was probably, uh, a lot, um, but. But yeah, that, I hadn't thought about the idea that, that our motion was to approve these two units of, to, you know, specific year and. Model and all that stuff, um, but it.
Cause.
Time out, it, it's no different than anybody else wanting to.
Time out, but is it back on the clock?
Yes, yeah, I, yes, they are, uh, they are. We actually had Terry at our, uh, meeting. And they've tried to chase this up the chain of command and they can't quite. Figure out what exactly happened. And I don't, I don't know if they know anything yet, but, but it hasn't. It, it, tell, tell us where it stands as far as we know now.
So I was in Laura's office this afternoon. We were discussing some things about the, the vehicles and different things. Uh, Terry had called me, uh, or actually I had called him earlier in the day and had him leave me a message and he called me back finally again. Uh, I asked him if there was any movement. He told me there were signed a priority number. But he wasn't sure what the priority number meant. It was M one and all their residential vehicles are, you know. You and I go buy a vehicle, they'll start out as a, uh, L nineteen and then by the time they finally get built, they're a one. Uh, he says, so he was gonna be calling Ford Fleet to find out what that classification meant. He said they have an E number, but there's no VIN associated with anything, so that means there's not anything for the line yet. So, but they recognize that there's a number and a priority now, which was never there before. So. That's all I can tell you that I know.
So where we stood with this is that when Terry, uh, proposed. This vehicle that's sitting on the lot now, right?
Correct.
Uh, uh, as a. As an alternative, uh, uh. My one concern was that we're not essentially ordering, we're not, we're not. Ordering something, we're buying a, a different used vehicle, but it sounded as though, uh, all of the. Accoutrements, I guess, that we look for, the, the towing packages, the, the engine size, those sorts of things, all. All meet. I guess it doesn't, it does, is it the same engine as those, as those other ones?
Right. Well, we discussed horsepower and if it would be capable of pulling the trailer.
Right.
And he explained that would all be adequate. I would, I would like to point out.
Built this, but not built the same.
No, not exactly, yeah. I would like to point out that our two thousand and three ambulants that we currently have. And, and you know, this is what was brought up before the fire committee. It's ailing a transmission at this point in time very badly. Uh. That's up to nine thousand, ten thousand dollars if we have to replace that. There's nothing to, to replace that. Now, I will also tell you that I've had just some general phone conversations with some different companies. And right now I've got, uh, a commitment anywhere from three to seven thousand dollars for our old ambulance. Which would help offset a little bit of the cost as well, because they wanna, they don't wanna buy it for the chassis. They wanna buy it for the box on the back. Because they can re, refurb, refurb that and put it on a different chassis. But those are some things that, you know, I brought before the fire committee that was the big consideration. Uh, when, when we were discussing that, is that we think we need to get something or we'll be, you know, sitting here with the.
E three and service outside because of the, the rescue?
No, no, it, we, we brought that back for hose testing and it just hasn't been taken back out to station three. Because we moved the brush rig and we thought we might as well just keep it right there. Uh, it's more valuable to us there than a brush rig during the winter time.
Uh, I'd just like to comment too that, you know, with, did you, go ahead. I didn't know you had your hand. You, but, but, I mean, we do have, you know, the one ambulance we sold. You know, so we still have one good one, but with this old one, it concerns me if. Somebody's in a row or driving it and they end up with an issue and then we have nothing. And then we have to drive an engine around going on a call. That will cost a lot more money than trying to get something to. Get us by.
Right.
Yes, Michelle.
Okay, I just want to make sure I'm understanding this correctly. We have two, two twenty-three is ordered. And then we would buy this, would be a third pickup we would have.
That's correct.
Why would we do that?
Uh, my question, well, we can always sell it.
Another year down the road.
All I'm saying, right, one point four percent per week for the past eleven weeks. So I'm sorry that Dean Arbor overpaid for a used car that they have on their lot, because they didn't buy it at a wholesale rate. If they look at their black book, they're upside down on all of their inventory. So that's my concern is. We, we started, we, we've, I don't know, because the, I'm just throwing it up. I, I am being the devil's advocate, because I've been in the market, so. Where, where is that cutoff point of taking, especially at this level, tax dollars and making a bad investment? And, and I say bad in the, in the guise of, we have the chief mobile, the outside of yourself using it has not gone on a single run. So are we gonna acclimate our men and women to using regular sized vehicles?
So let me, let me point out a couple of things that you may or may not know. If we have a structure fire, we currently have our own staff using their pickups to carry frozen hoses and. Different things back and possibly damaging their vehicles. This will always support as a utility vehicle. And the chief vehicle is a two thousand and five, is sooner or later gonna crumble. You know, uh, so if you look at the long picture down the road, that could possibly be. Whether I'm here or not, it could be a, 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 a chief vehicle, a utility vehicle, something that could pull our size, our trailer with our side by side for grass fires. It could be a multi-purpose unit.
Yes.
My other question is, do we have any idea what the twenty twenty-threes are going to cost?
It was minimal from my understanding.
I don't think it was, i- if we estimated what, like two percent or something like that.
Yeah.
Uh, it was, it was not, it wasn't.
Or, or is this a Ford Blue Oval deal of, we'll lock in the same prices that we've.
I don't think they have any obligation. It would be out of the goodness of their heart.
That'd be a step in the right direction, though.
Yeah.
By buying a used vehicle for this purpose that isn't set up with the heavy.
Yeah, I'm troubled by buying a used vehicle for this purpose that isn't set up with the heavy duty battery and all the stuff that goes with. With normal, normal police type vehicle. The other thing is. You know, I know someone quite well that. Ordered a F one fifty new twenty three in August. They said, well, they couldn't tell them anything until. Uh October about, you know, anything about it. But uh. Uh just got a production date for December five. In that vehicle, so it sounds like they're starting to move with production faster. I I don't know what the chip situation is, but. Apparently they're solved that to some extent. They're able to do that. So if a production dates in December, presumably it would be. Here in January. So if those vehicles were ordered, really were ordered. And didn't get followed up somewhere in the transition wouldn't be your fault, but you know, somewhere within between the dealer and the manufacturer. Uh I would think you got looking at a four month time.
Yeah. At the county had a similar issue um where they did the same thing to us. Uh it's cut us off and went to the next model year. And we have no outlook. No idea when we'll even see one. So it's.
Maybe consumer purchases are different than than, you know, we purchased. I don't.
Yeah, uh the only thing I can tell this board is that. At least once, if not twice, or maybe three times a week, I'm calling down to Dean Arbor Ford and finding out if there's any movement. I have an account. I try to look myself, but I try to verify with them uh. Because I know we have the need for these and we wanna get rid of our other ambulances. Uh so. Obviously, I'm trying to do what I can. My concern is here. If we do nothing, we sit here with the ailing ambulance with a bad transmission. Uh at the very least. If uh you know, like Laura said, if we have to down the road, we can sell it. I mean, but I think that this, I think we can use that as a department utility vehicle, uh possible chief mobile down the road. Uh something that will be able to pull our big trailer with our grass, uh our side by side in it. I. I think it's a, you know, a good opportunity. Um is it the perfect solution? Nothing's the perfect solution. But it's a chance that we have to take. Do we do we wait until our transmission's gone on our two thousand and three ambulance? I don't know. Do we run an engine in place of it? I don't know.
Any other?
I just don't think we have very many options. I mean, that two thousand and three concerns me. A lot. And it's like if that is gone. And I mean, even if we fixed it, how much is that gonna cost?
Yeah, I mean, if we have to put a new transmission and I I'm thinking you're in that particular vehicle. I mean, I don't know the exact total, but I think you're up to buy nine grand for that in that area.
So that's like a fourth of what it would cost. To get a new vehicle that's safe and.
Right.
And you're not, you're not gonna lose money. The same vehicle that I bought a year ago is ten thousand dollars more than when I purchased it a year ago. The value has gone up that much.
They consensus is going down.
Yeah.
Everybody has.
Everybody's, everybody looks at different websites, but if you wanna stop looking at blue book and look at black book like the dealerships do, then you'll see what the reality is in the market. Domestic dealers and production are up thirty percent. Uh so yeah, would that timeframe shorten potentially? But these are all unknowns. I didn't walk away knowing that Dean Arbor that he had mentioned at the previous meeting. I didn't know that that meeting was or that was still on the books for moving forward. I was somewhat confused whether or not two twenty threes were ordered now or not. Um. So.
That's what he told us at the fire committee meeting for sure.
Well, we've we've heard, we've heard trucks have been ordered before though. So that's my theory.
Gary gave us the price on the twenty twenty three, so we have an idea.
Sure, I'll call him tomorrow on that.
So. We we have a recommendation through the fire committee.
I'll make a motion that we purchase the two thousand twenty Ford F one fifty four by four from Dean Arbor. And the amount not to exceed forty two thousand.
We have a motion on the table. Is there support?
Support.
It's been moved and supported for their discussion.
So when you say forty two thousand, it's including all.
Including.
Including whatever.
All the.
Ancillary.
Ancillary stuff.
And it'll come out of the equipment mileage.
Yes.
Which is two oh five two three six nine seven six.
Just just like one more piece of discussion and I'm. I I. I can't help but wonder if this wouldn't be a good option for that ARPA money.
We.
I I would have to say that when we get down to the, because Michelle broke out the equipment mileage expenditures thus far.
I think.
Okay, did you get that? I think we're. The fire department committee as well need to sit down and start looking, cause we. Have spent a lot more money than even I remembered uh spending out of.
And we do have a fire committee meeting tomorrow morning at eight. That's gonna be one of the hot topics that we're gonna be speaking about.
About the ARPA money or the equipment mileage.
Well, the equipment mileage money, but also we're.
Right, yeah, we can't, yeah.
I'm just trying to look into the future a little bit.
Absolutely.
Well, and yeah, this money, but the one thing I like about the ARPA money. Especially on something like this. Or or any static cost is that we don't have to, it's not a reoccurring expense later on. So it's not like we're using it for payroll or something like that, that we have to wonder what happens when the money runs out. So I'm just trying to think of ways that we can. Utilize A, some of that ARPA money and then B, look to uh. Financial concerns. Into the future.
Well, I think we're gonna be talking about those. Um, but yes, trustee Paulie.
Just remember one thing about the ARPA money. It's gone, it's gone.
Mm hmm.
But we also gotta use it by.
Twenty twenty six.
Yeah.
Yeah, my time is.
So. Yes, Michelle.
We do know that we're coming into, I'm not supposed to say it. Frozen brown water. Season, so we need to have money for that.
Yeah, which. So.
I just just a thought, I'm just looking at, I'm just looking at ways to to. Uh be economically or fiscally responsible.
So that's. Copy that. Well, we have a motion and support.
And right now the motion is to pay it from the equipment mileage.
Yeah.
Okay. And it's motion was by treasurer, supported by trustee Paul.
Yep. Any further discussion? Besides the one going on? Are we good?
More discussion.
Yeah. Uh there's no other discussion, no complaints.
Treasurer Larry Summers.
Yes.
Trustee Crawl.
Yes.
Trustee Reiner.
No.
Trustee Polly.
No.
Trustee Lappin.
Yes.
Clerk Palavich, yes. Supervisor Skibby.
No. Good. And then moving forward uh is fire department discussion. Um this is obviously.
Uh you to stay at the podium or do you want me to sit?
You can sit down if you. So this was added because here we find ourselves uh and we have a a lot of conversation yet to go. Uh but in order to get to uh any meaningful conversation, we need to know what options are on the table. So I guess this is where, one way or another, um. I'd like to uh as a board, reach out by motion to uh any municipal partners to see what options of discussion could be on the table to be discussed. So, yes, Michelle.
By that, do we, are you referring to reaching out to the city?
I'm good with the city, CRTC, any other of our townships. Open the floodgate, because if we don't know who's actually able to sit at the table, then what decisions are, how are we gonna frame them?
My thoughts are, I am not good with going with a contract for services.
And I'm not saying contract, I'm just saying discussion of anything that's out there. I'm not pigeonholing us in any given. Way, shape or form. We just need to know what options are on the table, period.
I don't know why you would need the board's approval. I mean, if you wanna talk to some other municipality, you can do that.
I I can do it. I think that we are a board. And if we are going to look at and investigate all options, it makes a lot more sense in the board to say. Yes, let's explore all options than it would be just for one individual, because it's been easy thus far for one individual. It's not ever been that way.
Well, we could have said that this whole time we're trying to pursue a mileage. And show board unity and we couldn't get it at this board to support a mileage.
So.
And it looks like people have already been talking to city, looking at who's all watching our meeting tonight.
Mm hmm.
So I think someone's already reached out to the city.
It it that means nothing. Yeah, whoever's on it, that's. Who's on it, on public meeting.
I mean, if if we wanna explore options to be more efficient, run our operations different. Look at other things. I'm not opposed to that.
I think, yeah, all of it. I'm I'm not, like I said, I'm not solely looking at a singular function. But. Is it this board's will not to to openly explore any options?
I think we're.
Because that would be the question.
But I am not for a contract of services.
Could you explain that? Why?
I think it would. Financially, it could in the future put us in a very bad situation. The last contract of services we explored really only guaranteed a rate for the first five years. After that, we didn't know what we'd be paying and we were still in it for at least another five years. Um I don't wanna get into another contract with an entity that we are currently having litigations with. That doesn't make sense to me. I wish we could solve one.
I'd love to.
I don't wanna be in court with other two.
So.
Well. You know, in the mission statement we just approved tonight, it talks about protecting the lives and property of the citizens of the charter township. To me, we had the best option to do that. Uh at less cost, about a third of the cost of what we're what we're doing now.
But what we had. Anything like that, Russ. We never saw anything like that. All we saw was a number.
No, no, that contract included. Two people from the city department at each of our stations. Two people at each of our stations.
It was a payroll thing. That's all it was. It didn't talk about any of the other things that I was criticized for not not having the the knowledge of establishing budget, but yet. We were willing apparently to walk into something that we didn't have any idea what the cost of doing business is going to be.
Well.
So we can.
And this is, I've said all along. That that. In a, in a, in the. Environment that we're in now, and when I say we, I mean municipalities.
Yeah.
Some of the logical ways of looking at this, if we can't get. Um the necessary funds to operate it, then reaching out to. Any and all municipalities to form an authority. Is the logical way to go. But if we're going to have. One entity. Controlling something. Uh without much input, that doesn't make any sense to me. So if we've got.
So to that.
Three or four municipalities.
We're talking about a historic that, cause that's easier to remember is two years ago, a contract for the city. All I'm saying is conversation.
Yeah, no, I'm.
And and they may come back and say, thanks, no thanks.
Maybe, and that's why I've thought all along that the idea of. Well, particularly, it would be reasonably, uh the logical places would probably be Sandborn. Uh city of Alpena, Alpena Township, Maple Ridge and and maybe Wilson Township. Would be the the logical entities to form a. Uh sort of this umbrella throughout most of the populated area of the of northeast of 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 Alpena County. That made sense to me.
Will and willing to do it. I think if that's willing to make sense to you, then why have we not? I mean, I'll send out letters to all the supervisors. I mean, we can have them here at our board tables, because you stated it a million times, the best way out is an authority. But when you look at the county seat and sixty six percent of our population being in the two principal municipalities. That's two thirds of the total county's population.
I understand that.
So.
Well, I mean, I'm okay for reaching out to talk to the community. But I don't.
I'm I'm just saying, what options are on the table? Because how else can we have a meaningful conversation if we don't know what options are even on the table? That's as simple as I'm trying to keep it.
Yeah.
Because I'm not trying to say contract for service. I don't know. What does it look like?
Well, why can't we? I mean, we just found out the mileage didn't pass and why can't we? Stay in the house. We already have a fire department. And if there's ways to make our own fire department better by maybe messing with schedules or messing with different ways we do things or whatever. I mean, those are still options that we can do to keep it in-house and. Figure that stuff out. I mean, why are we?
I'm not, I'm not removing, we're not removing any of those from.
But what I'm saying is, is we already have this. I mean, why, why do we even have to look for other options? Why can't we just improve on what we have?
For the first mileage, not to say anything. And here we are after two mileage requests that both failed and we knew that we needed them and we needed it period for emergency services. But. Here we are. We've had both mileage requests fail. And I'm not saying that that solely means that. The voters wanted. Options B or C, but it mean meant that with this economic situation that we find ourselves in, they didn't want to increase their 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 taxes. I I can, I can, and I can appreciate that. And I'm not, and I'm not saying that those aren't options that are obviously still on the table. We're, we are staying the course. We're. Actually investing the course. But to have a meaningful, full conversation. You have to know all the cards are in the deck and the the deck's on the table. And if it's not on it, then at least you can narrow it down from there, but not identifying or wanting to talk about an option should never be an option. That's, this is just discussion. And so it historically, yeah. It it was, there was questionable things in terms of the renewal and 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 that contract, contract language. You know, everybody knows. Can can be tweaked. But I'm not even getting to the contract language. What options are there? As benign as that. Because. If we don't want to acknowledge what options are there as a board. Then tell me how to. How how I should move forward. Just.
Well, if we look back, if we look way back, the fire department ad hoc committee. This was commissioned, was coming up with several different. Methodologies and and. We brought those forward. But I mean, I I'm certainly willing to. Re-bring it up and talk some more.
Well, it it has to, as as a board, we need to make a decision. Period. Uh and that's the only kind of angle I'm getting to is. What topics are topics? And if it's not a topic, then we know it's it's not a top.
Yes, if I if I can respond to Laura and also what's being said here. Every option that I've heard, other than the contract. Uh with the city. Uh has. Resulted in a reduction of services to our citizens more. And the the current operation costs us roughly one point two million. We were able to. Lock in double the uh double the uh amount of people in our stations. To answer calls. Uh for less than that by a third. So you'd have to have a very sizable and un unsupported. Increase to get to the point where we're at right now, where we're taking. How much is it? Two hundred fifty, three hundred thousand dollars out of the general fund?
Two hundred forty.
Okay. Uh so uh and at one point it was three hundred. Uh it's four. Not that long ago. I was coming to the meetings. That was before I was elected. Um. Just before, but it was after you were seated here. So to me. Any option that is brought forth. Other than what we had in our hands. Doesn't. Make heads no logic to me, because there is all of this suspicion that they'll raise the rate so high that it's gonna cost us more than we pay now. More than we pay now? I don't think so. And we're gonna have two, the four people, my understanding for fighting a fire, for example, we don't have that many structured fires in town. But the seven to ten or nine that we have a year. Right now, we have two people. Right now, we have two people that can answer the call, one from each end of town. And so there's going to be a lag for the second person to get there. What lag is there? And we we had some statistics way back when, but we've got to have four people unseen to enter a structure to fight the fire. So, uh, we'll have to rely on our paid on call to get there in a fairly uh, quick timeframe. At this point, we've got two people at each end of town and other people in the middle between our two stations that can answer that call when there's a structure fire, you know, they're all going to come with a structure fire that are on duty. You know, we're saying how many alarms and all that. So my point is uh, and as far as the uh, first responder stuff, we get there how many minutes before the city ambulance shows up, which has the contract to provide that? So we have one person that can get there probably faster than city ambulance can get there at any end of our community. Um, so to me, uh, the logic of rejecting that and the fiscal part of rejecting that never made sense to me. And and any of the options Laura is talking about reduced hours for the staff so that we reduce our budget. That's just a reduction in services, but we don't have to reduce.
Just to clarify, though, I didn't mean just reduce hours. I meant looking at a different way to do the schedule and stuff like that. I didn't mean reducing hours.
I I would have to have.
I'm just saying.
Detail in front of me to explain what you mean by that, because that that still doesn't mean anything to me. Reducing or changing the schedule. I don't know how that saves us.
Well, overtime. It's part of that.
So obviously, this is.
Options.
This was simply supposed to be, let's put all options on the table. And what I'm hearing is that uh, there's members of this board that don't want to vote upon asking any other municipalities. I I.
How do we have to vote on it?
Because the last time, I think it was a comforting fact for the vast majority of this board, but uh, for the past two years, all the blame of all this fire department fell on my shoulders. And so you think I'm gonna step up? I mean, if I need to call and ask every municipality, hey, would you be interested in A, B, or C? I will. I've because as a board, I I guess I'm, this is where my common sense just guess must get blown out the window.
An authority would merge fire departments.
In that.
Create.
Create.
So that there is a, so that there there's it it's its own autonomous.
No problem with exploring an authority.
Think we can get that done in six months?
No, I don't think we can.
No.
To be staying the core.
To be perfectly realistic about it, you probably couldn't get it done within two years.
Right.
Right. And where's the coverage going to come from when we have it?
We currently have a fire.
The way the way it works right now. And so and so if that means that we have to help, uh, if we have to rely on some mutual aid, we have to rely on mutual aid. That's why we have those agreements.
But most of the townships.
Absolutely.
Some of us have auto aid, some of us have mutual aid to varying degrees. Yeah, I mean, that's. And so.
So if we're going to reach out to any and all uh, area municipalities, I I personally would rather have it done in a in a letter form that we see before it goes out. Uh, I I don't want to uh, have these just casual conversations.
My my, I would suggest that maybe if we are going to do something like that, it would go through fire committee.
I was gonna say, why don't you draft one tomorrow?
Uh, well, we.
Sounds like you're starting at eight o'clock.
I mean, it, I mean, I don't have a problems talking about those sorts of things.
We we shouldn't, we shouldn't have a problem.
Done some, I've done some research on it. And I think there are currently I want to say twenty-three uh, uh, fire authorities in Michigan.
So then.
They clearly work.
They do.
And so.
Because every municipality is in the exact same position. Recruitment, we had, we had a good presentation today.
There is, we are by no means unique. And so and so, uh, in the world of law of large numbers, that it tends to, it tends, it clearly must work because there's many out there and they're growing. And that was just in Michigan.
Yeah, no. So I I I looked at the fire committee to give, I have no problem sending a letter that's drafted by.
I just have a question. So we create this letter and we send it out to the eight townships or the seven other townships in the city. So the CRTC was brought up.
Uh, because a- any skill set, obviously, that their their mission is federally directed towards within that fence.
But they're not coming out here.
They and they, I mean, I'm just saying they wouldn't probably be a part, or maybe I guess.
I love to laugh at dumb dumb options. Let's start laughing at dumb options because then we're actually talking about all the options because some of them don't make the most.
They could answer and say, yes, we're interested. No, we're not interested.
Thanks. That's all this was meant to do. What's on the table? And if you want to write it, more power.
I I'm certainly willing to to uh, have that conversation. I'm certainly willing to do that. Uh, I I've made it real clear to the fire committee and many other people that that at some point in time, this is going to have to be discussed. Note differently that at some point in time, the state of Michigan is going to figure out that you don't need thirteen hundred and fifty townships in the state of Michigan.
They're already working on that.
I know, they have been for years. And so and so if 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 those wheels are already in motion, then you'd get on board that bus.
So I I'll I'll look to you guys after your your meeting in the morning and go from there. Um, okay, with that being said, uh, next item of business is sixteen housing task force. This was in addition to uh, the agenda. Um, this is, uh, the housing task force was comprised of Alpena County, uh, city, our ourselves and a a multitude of various other shareholders. Um, a a lot of the principal funding has been allocated from community foundation, Northeastern Michigan, Vessar. Uh, um, each principal municipality, the county and the township or the county and the city have put in money towards us. This is, uh, they're asking for a thousand dollars uh, of which I think that it would best be served coming out of the uh, GL for Board of uh, Trustees at one oh one, one oh one. Uh, eight oh one, zero, zero, zero. Um, we have ample funding uh, in that GL, um, and I think it would be a sign of good faith that we chip into one of the biggest issues that we face as a community, and that is our our housing shortage. So I'd entertain the motion to.
Make that motion.
Okay, we have a motion on the table. I'll support it. Oh, trustee, I don't want to take it from you. I've only. No, uh, trustee Ryan has it with support for their discussion. This is a consultant's coming in, looking at us as a county, looking at everything that they need to do. This document is what every um, developer, every uh, housing contractor needs to see in the community. Um, so this will tell us a lot of things we already know, but give us the means to leverage grants and other funding mechanisms.
Who's the driver of this?
Who is the driver? Uh, the housing task force?
That just made up of at least.
Intergovernmental. Yeah, we are actually now it's, I mean, there's, we actually have a city manager, Rachel Simonsky on board. Uh, we have the county, we have public, private partnerships already in play.
So I guess what I'm saying is that I I appreciate all of those entities are sort of pooling their monies together to to try to find a consultant that can help us learn how to better create housing and so on and so forth. But who contracts with somebody? Is there, is there?
The fiduciary is actually being passed through Target as a fiduciary. Uh, and Mike Mahler is, I imagine, going to be uh, as a fiduciary signing that that agreement. Um, but I don't have that exact. I know that they are housing the money and they are going to be distributing to the professional conducting.
And so we're not, we're not creating a problem, but I think there are five oh one C three.
Already.
But I mean, that means that they can lobby. So I think, is that, is that create a problem as a?
Then for the county.
One C three or C four?
They can do uh, lobbying up to a certain extent that uh, when you get into federal funds and things like that, or most of every story, I just said those are by law, there was, there were some exceptions. They can up to a certain point. It can't be a predominant part of their activity.
I I know I'm I'm getting the eye from Michelle like I'm getting too deep into the.
I know that was that 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 I went for me, see.
Well, I caught me spottin' up because I don't want to, I don't want to be using taxpayer money to be, oh, to get to go to a an entity that you know, might not fit within the model of it. But if if it's okay, if everybody else is doing it.
Everybody else is doing it. Let's jump off the bridge.
Yes, we'll all answer. Yeah, better to ask forgiveness.
Yep. So we have a motion and support. Any further discussion? Uh, roll call please.
Trustee Crowell.
Yes.
Trustee Ryder.
Yes.
Trustee Polley.
Yes.
Just be laughing.
Yes.
There's a lot of Jeff, treasure all our summer.
Yes.
Supervisor's kidding.
Yes. Uh, the last thing of business before our close session is, uh, we, I have uh, met with uh, John Stender uh, this morning after uh, an introduction was given to me, uh, it is my position to bring forward a recommendation for appointment to the planning commission. Um, he will be uh, willing to serve a three-year term uh, for the planning commission and uh, Matt Redosy is willing to step back as to an alternate position. And that would give us a full uh, compliment on the planning commission.
This is Mark Sten.
John Stender. Yeah, township resident as well. Very nice gentleman.
You should be my neighbor.
Should be. Do you need a motion?
I made a motion.
And our background detective was asking. So he works, actually, he brings a unique skill set uh, to the planning commission. He's uh, got thirty years in the gas and oil exploration uh, industry. Uh, so he's actually a big ticket item uh, in municipalities as to easements, right of ways and other deeded uh, complexities there into utilities. Um, so he brings a different skill set um, that I don't think anybody else uh, on the planning commission currently has.
That's great.
Um, and a heck of a nice young man. Say that. Yeah, you know, his parents, good kid. So I, it would be my recommendation if if there's.
We've made a motion.
Yeah, you guys are already on a three-year term. Uh, any other questions about Mr. Stender? Not. Uh, voice vote, all those in favor of uh, appointment of John Stender to the planning commission had a three-year term uh, signified by saying I. Oppose the same uh, motion is. Well, we could do a rule. It's going to be an expenditure. So yes, would you? Ooh, yeah, she has.
Do I have to remember whether we ate eyedra?
Try to.
Trustee Reiner.
Yes.
Trustee Polley.
Yes.
Trustee Lappin.
Yes.
Dirk Palovich, yes. Treasure Valerie Summers.
Yes.
Trustee Crowell.
Yes.
Supervisor's giving.
I'm getting tired.
Okay, at this point in time, I'd entertain a motion to go into closed session. Uh, yes, we have a motion.
A motion to enter into closed session under section one C of the open meetings act for strategy discussions pertaining to the firefighter negotiation.
Support. Support. So we have a motion and support for their discussion. Bring on all those in, uh, roll call, please.
Trustee Polly.
Yeah.
Trustee Lappin.
Yes.
Dirk Palovich, yes. Treasure Valerie Summers.
Oh, yes, sorry.
Trustee Crowell.
Yes.
And trustee Ryder.
Yes.
Yes. We're now officially. Okay, so we're. We're officially back in open session. Uh, this is the second opportunity for public comment. If there is any public comment online, uh, please use the bottom task bar to either raise your hand or send a message so that we can identify you and listen to comment. Again, this is the last opportunity for public comment. If there is any uh, public comment online, please do so by using the bottom task bar to raise your hand or send a message. Seeing no public comment, uh, is there any other discussion for the the good of the board? Yes.
Um, when are we having a December board meeting?
Thank you.
Uh, well, it sounds like we'll be having that probably roughly two weeks or so out. Um.
Be the nineteenth to the twelfth.
Uh, right now.
The nineteenth, which is Monday, or the twelfth, which is a Monday? Do you want it on?
Well, then, well, I think I got border review. I mean, while I guess we could do it.
I mean, does it have to be on a Monday?
Doesn't have to be.
Special meeting.
I can't do Wednesday.
Or we could do it even Wednesday, the twenty-first, right before the Christmas luncheon.
Oh, in the morning. We have time. Also, I would like to.
Christmas lunch and it was the twentieth.
It is, I was wrong.
Yes, uh, I saw a couple of hands go up.
Oh, what?
We have.
Well, I wanted to ask what the, about that, uh, both.
Well, right now, the sixteenth, just so everybody knows on this board, uh, the sixteenth, the township offices will be closed. Um, we are finally getting the uh, last uh, phase done of conversion to our generator. Uh, and in order to make that transfer switch happen, they have to shut this entire building down. Alpena Power has to be on premise.
It's gonna be shut down all day.
Yeah, I asked if it could be done in a half a day, that it probably more like six, seven hours. So offices will be closed. Staff has already been informed. Uh, unfortunately, they get a a free day on the township. Um, so with that being said, um, we can go out. I mean, I don't want to go out too too far uh, towards uh, the holidays, just in case sounded like.
Well, border review isn't until like three o'clock, right?
The.
Border review on the twelfth. Doesn't it start at three?
Yeah.
So we could do a board meeting earlier.
I don't really care to do two main board like it's.
We have a payroll that day.
Yeah.
Okay.
Mondays aren't good.
Mondays are never good here.
I'm okay on Tuesdays, Thursdays, we do in the evenings or during the day. Wednesday mornings don't work.
The fourteenth would be two weeks from this Wednesday.
Yeah.
How about the fourteenth?
Fourteenth, we can do the.
In the afternoon.
Yeah, we could do afternoon into evening on the fourteenth.
So what are you talking?
Is that what we're doing?
What time on Wednesday?
Um, this is doing during the day, eleven AM.
It'll be twelve for one.
Eleven AM.
Okay. You just said four o'clock.
Or what?
Cash.
Well, you were throwing around four o'clock because you're seeming the only one that can't drive their manually given vehicle.
Well, I'd rather in the afternoon on a Wednesday or Monday.
Yeah, that's kind of where we're at. I'm I I would like to say somewhat consistent.
Would that work for you?
One o'clock?
That's just mine and Laura's lunch hours. But hey, we don't need to eat.
We haven't eaten days.
Bring you, we'll bring you some uh, hard burn pizza or something.
So what time? So we're looking at the fourteenth. Are we all agreeable to that date? What time? One P M.
One o'clock. One.
One o'clock. Okay. It is December fourteenth, one P M is our next.
You can't.
Yes.
Okay.
I don't know.
Okay, well.
Thunder order.
So, okay, yes.
Um, are we, just out of curiosity, are we going to have a budget meeting in December at all, do you think?
I don't know if we, we could.
I would like to get going on this budget because I think we could zip through.
I haven't even gotten Mark's final proposed budget.
Yeah, but we'll start with general.
Let's just.
I can't do it that way because the state reporting requires me to have, this is what I've been trying to.
For the CV TRS P V W X Y Z.
Is that what kind of organization is that, like?
It's for.
And he's still.
And last year.
He's going on the third iteration of this budget. December fourteenth. Not yet. Well, we'll pick it at that.
Did you lose your shit again?
So we have our next special beat, number fourteen, at one P M. I'm not. So we have our next special beat, December fourteenth at one PM. Is there any other discussion for the good?
I have a question. I'm part of the CIP committee. We have not met in probably almost a year. I know we're getting back into budgeting. That was the CIP has to do. With planning the budget.
Point of origin.
Call him.
Well, you're the chair.
I was, I was talking to Nate that I thought he'd taken that over because I I would gladly be the chair there, but I was told. I was told it was going to work through the planning commission.
Yeah, that's really where.
Oh, Ross. I get chair. Then I, my question is, where are we with this CIP and how is the planning commission doing?
They need to, it's about ready to be intro to the planning committee this first year.
Convenient. It's going.
Well, it's. Yeah, there's a. Couple of things going on, so.
Okay, well, it's just, uh, we said we needed it by the next year for budget.
Yeah, absolutely.
Here we are, and we.
Dealing with a bunch of, there we have. So we have December fourteenth, one PM. And.
It's steeped.
Whoops, and a whoops. So uh with that being said. Here we are. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
So who made the motion?
Me.
She was quick on it.